The privilege of living in such a beautiful area such as Vero Beach. We're grateful for your kindness toward us and we're grateful for your wonderful grace that you've extended toward us all. Lord, I'm asking you today to watch over this council meeting, that you would give wisdom and clear direction in all things as these men and women lead our city. I pray that you would give them your wisdom way beyond their years. I pray too, Lord, that you would prosper and bless our city, cause it to grow, cause financial blessings to come to this way. And may we always remember you in all that we do and say. We're grateful again. Thank you for your kindness toward us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And by the way, that was Pastor Larry Bowen from Central Assembly. Greatly appreciate him coming in and doing that. With that, we'll go ahead and it says May 17th, we're at May 19th, alternate meeting. And if, go ahead and start the meeting and have a roll call.
Mr. Howell?
Present.
Mr. Winger?
Present.
Mrs. Turner?
Care.
Mr. Old has an excused absence. Mayor Kramer.
And we are here. Is there any changes on the agenda from the staff?
Staff has no changes.
Does the council have any changes or a recommendation for approval?
Ms. Mayor, I have a question. Item 3.5 believes it should be discussed following the ordinance for A.
Okay, do you want to, you want to move that to like, like 4B?
I would like to do that.
Okay.
It seems like, yeah, we can't approve the contract change without having the ordinance in place. It's just...
Okay, so we will show move item 3.5 off of the consent agenda and move that to item If there's no other changes, I entertain a motion of approval.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. And we have a proclamation for Safe Boating Week.
Mr. Mayor, I have the proclamation and Mark Cannon and group, would you please come to the podium and I'll read it. While you're coming up, I'd like to make a comment. I've been around boats since 1948. I've actually passed some instruction in 1948. It's a long time ago, I guess. And over my lifetime, I've seen more boat accidents, known to more people that have been hurt, drowned, actually seven drowned that I've known and personally known of. My own son wrecked our boat, towed our boat three or four years ago. And the reason I say this is, most people think a boat's easy to run. And quite frankly, it's harder to run properly than a car. And so I think, I take this seriously. I will read the proclamation as follows. Excuse me. Whereas recreation boating is fun and enjoyable and the citizens and visitors of Vero Beach are fortunate that we have sufficient waterways and ocean resources to accommodate a wide variety of pleasure boats activity. However, boating can be a risky activity to the unprepared. And whereas, not knowing or obeying the nautical rules of the road, using alcohol or drugs while operating a boat or choosing not to wear a life jacket are examples of very risky boating activity. On average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, with approximately 70% of them caused by drowning. And whereas, if people are aware of the risks, then they are likely to take precautionary measures, such as always wearing a life jacket to protect themselves, their friends and family. That is why we must continue to spread the message of boating safety, not only during the National Safe Boating Week, but also through the entire year. And whereas, at times disaster still strikes even when we are prepared. But thanks to the courageous women and men who are serve our nation and protect our waters, the United States Coast Guard stands ready to help keep our citizens safe on the water. And whereas, as we look forward to spending time with loved ones this summer and taking advantage of all of our scenic waterways, we encourage everyone to visit www.uscgboating.org. That's www.uscgboating.org to learn more about responsible boating and together we can enjoy the beauty and bounty of the water and avoid preventable injuries and property damage. Now, therefore, the City Council, the City of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby support the North American Safe Boating Campaign, including the Wear Life Jacket Program, and proclaim May 21st to 27th, 2016 as Safe Boating Week. We encourage all citizens to observe this occasion by learning more about safe boating practices and taking advantage of boating education. Mark?
Thank you very much for your kind words and your introduction there. We're the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. We're the volunteer arm of the Coast Guard. Our primary mission is recreational boater safety. And to that end, we offer boating safety classes and in fact, free for students aged 13 to 18. And we would encourage everyone and all the students to take advantage of that if they're interested in boating. Of course, we also accommodate adults and for a nominal fee to cover the cost of materials. And anyone who is thinking about buying a boat or who has a boat, it's critically important that you take a boating safety course. This was highlighted to me just last Sunday where we rescued a guy in a 16-foot boat off of Port Canaveral who went out to watch the Thunder on the Beach, Cocoa Beach Boat Races. Well, he went out there, it's a little 16-foot boat, the seas kicked up to four to six feet, waves were crashing over his bow. He was, he was supposed to be anchored. He lost his anchor. His engine wouldn't start. He didn't have a radio. We took him under tow to get him out of the races because he was drifting into the race course, endangering both himself and the raceboats. Got him out, told him, "You ought to put on your life jackets." And he goes, "Life jackets? Oh, I don't have any of those." You know? So we gave him life jackets and then towed him to safety. But, so it's, it's very, very critical that people learn the basics of boating safety before they get out there on the water. Let's see, tomorrow, by the way, is National Wear Your Life Jacket to Work Day to highlight that. Life jacket wear is, is very much encouraged by the Coast Guard and everyone interested in boating safety. And life jackets are not your grandfather's life jacket, right? They're, they're not the big bulky things that they used to be in the past. There's new technology that makes them very comfortable and they even come, come in fashionable collars nowadays for the ladies. So we would encourage you to wear your life jacket to work tomorrow, just to, to highlight that. On Saturday, we're having an event down at Riverside Park, which is, we're going to try, participate in this worldwide event to highlight wear of, of life jackets. We're trying to get, you're going to, trying to break a world record. So the sign-in for that is between 10 and 11. We're going to try and do the big event at 11, take pictures and, and get in the record book for wearing your life jacket. We're also doing vessel safety inspections. The complimentary vessel safety inspections are offered by our, our flotilla here in Vero Beach, Paul Harmon. Paul, Paul Harmon here is, is my vessel safety inspector. And Paul, you have a few words about what you're doing on this weekend?
We'll be conducting vessel safety checks from 0900 until noon at the Riverside Park, at the boating ramp, at the new ramp beside the Veterans Memorial Island. And it's free to everyone. We check all the safety items on the boat, check the boat for anything that we, that might not be in compliance, worn safety jackets, worn anchor lines, things that just wear out by time. So that'll be open to the public and it is free.
And Paul, also, will, if you're scheduled with Paul, he'll, he'll come to your house and do a safety inspection on your boat, make sure that you're, you're up to snuff on, on your, all your safety equipment. So with that, I just thank you very much for your, for your proclamation and promoting recreational boater safety and see you again.
Mark, before you come up, I want to tell you an anecdote.
Yeah.
I worked when I was, a little later than 1948, I was, worked for a boat company. And we ran excursion boats, but we also, we also, you had clientele that had boats. And we had a doctor, and he's probably not with us anymore, named Dr. Soboleski. And he came from a big city and he had a big boat. And he'd get into the boat and he'd race the engines and he'd yell out, "Tie me loose, tie me loose." And then we'd tie him loose. And then when he came back, it was good for about $1,000 worth of damage. And we had a name for guys like that. And unfortunately, I'm on the river a great deal, is, is the mayor even more than I am. And unfortunately, we, the name we have for these people, and I, there's no aspersion to this word, but we called them plumbers, not boaters, but plumbers. Now, I have a good friend that's a plumber. So I would encourage the public to understand not to be a plumber and to do what you're suggesting here. So thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Come forward.
I'm not going to shake your hand. Trying to keep people healthy.
We need a picture for my boss.
Yeah, let's scoot in a little bit. Get back here.
We'll give you a note if you need.
We don't have any plumbers today.
How are we doing?
I think we're doing good.
I don't like this camera.
Thank you so much for your work. Really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not going to shake. If Paul ever reminds people about those flares, that's what they always get me up in special. My flare has expired.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's true. Very good.
Okay, next, we will have some presentations by the items from the public. And the first one on the, the agenda is Commissioner Tim Zork. Give us a PowerPoint presentation.
Good morning, council members. Mr. Mayor, we find the little clicky here. About a month ago, I held a lagoon workshop called, "Are We Making Any Progress?" And at that program, I saved the last two most interesting items for the end, but some, you know, some people couldn't stay the entire duration of the program. So I'm going to show you something that a sister city, Destin, Florida, has very much in common when it comes to Bethel Creek and Destin Harbor and what Destin Harbor did to solve the problem. And the goal of this is to bring it forward, have the science community, the Indian River Lagoon Council folks participate and say, "Would this work? Wouldn't it work? How would you pay for it?" We could look at the model that Destin used because they, they've done it, it works effectively. Their water quality in their area has dramatically improved. And for the most part, they got the contributing factors, Department of Transportation to pay for one of the biggest chunks of it. And we know A1A is a state road and that primarily drains into the Bethel Creek area or one of the, one of the areas it drains into. Interesting enough, just to look at the, what did Bethel Creek look like before development came along? So this is the oldest aerial photograph I could come across, 1951. And then snap forward to today and it, it looks just quite a bit different. You know, there was a lot more openness, a lot more natural wetlands. Apparently, a lot of filling took place in that area. And again, very similar to Destin Harbor when we go through what they had. A1A, obviously to the right, parallel to the ocean. Here's the key thing, the similarity between Destin Harbor and here is they had Highway 98. We have Highway A1A. We have a number of outfall structures, but we have one behemoth structure, 76 by 48-inch pipe that literally can move millions of gallons of water from the A1A corridor right into Bethel Creek. There's another view of, of actually where the placement of that is in, in Montney. And Public Works was real helpful in getting us some of the piping diagram of how A1A is, is drained and how some of the city outfalls connect to it. And that kind of fast forwarding to what the city of Destin had done almost two decades ago. So I have a really good track record. They had a need for, in trying to improve their water quality, how do they do it? And also, what's the current state of the harbor after they put this project into place? Again, looking at their original, Destin Harbor looked kind of like Bethel Creek did, empty, you know, just kind of a natural environment there. Their pass, their inlet pass originally where Bethel Creek was known to at some point in time be an occasional overflow storm opening where water might come from the ocean in or vice versa from the lagoon out. And then it would naturally close back up. Not any aerial photography back from those 1800s, so we don't have a good, all I have is some of the old stories from, from some of the older residents in the county. Destin Harbor today, again, looks kind of like how Bethel Creek is built out. The natural inlet opening that was there is, is kind of a little bit south of the 98 icon road marker that you see. So there is, obviously Destin Harbor in itself is smaller, obviously the entire Indian River Lagoon. But when you look at the Bethel Creek area in, in terms of, of square miles, it, it has a lot of similarities. So they started 1985 talking about how to do this because the water quality in Destin Harbor had gotten so poor that there, there was no fish life, no sea grass. It was just really kind of like a cesspool for the Highway 98 corridor. It had a lot of fishing boat activities in that area that were going out to the Gulf of Fish, which we don't necessarily have. We have a lot of pleasure boat activity in our area. How did they get the pump conversation and funding started? So it goes all the way back to 1989. And they looked at funding partners that they had. And it was interesting, somebody encouraged me that before you invite somebody to speak at your, "Are we making progress?", is talk to each of the permitting agencies that actually permitted the project for them and make sure that they're happy with it. Because if it was a bad deal and it's reflected that, you know, well, we should never permit one of these again, it was a nightmare, that type of thing. But I pretty much got glowing reviews from, from all the agencies in that region of the state that said, "Yes, it's really worked. It's ongoing. It's, it has improved the water quality in, in the harbor area." Obviously, $1989 is a lot cheaper than today's dollars. But keeping that in mind, that obviously something would cost more, but the goal of this is to first try a pilot project of, potentially of 89 days. 89 days, apparently when you do something 90 or longer, it becomes more of a potentially permanent project. So I said, "Well, I would write the scope for a pilot project to be 89 days to have lesser rules to comply." At the evening open house at, at the Bethel Creek House, we would have some examples of how, how would you potentially do a, a pilot project? How would you get the water from the ocean into Bethel Creek? The plan would be is to use the existing piping structure under A1A that currently flows into Bethel Creek and use a floating type boom, non-turtle season, something that would be safe to divers and fish and those things, maybe operated only during daylight hours where you can have an observer watching it. And again, the key is to how do we find other partners to really pay for the bulk of this? But before we can get to that point, Bethel Creek, or excuse me, Destin Harbor, they went out 1,000 feet offshore. They didn't do a pilot project. They just went full steam ahead on the complete permanent project, feeling pretty confident about it. On their inside, this is inside the Destin Harbor area, they have both a motorized and a, what I'd call a gravity hydraulic feed. They can move 10,000 gallons a minute just by the tide difference between the inside and the outside. And I think they move about 35,000 gallons a minute with the motorized side. Obviously, the free gravity one is, cost to operate is, is very minimal. For, that's their inlet offshore. You can see it's operating, but the fish aren't getting sucked in through the, the grates that they have there. It's much oversized to keep that type of intake flow from, from damaging the, the marine life. There's kind of an aerial view of where their offshore intake was and then where the water went inside in Destin Harbor. Over time, they learned some things of, if you ever go to do one, don't put in these types of pumps, don't use this type of materials. There's a lot of educational things we could learn from them that they had to go pay and fix because it didn't, because of the salt environment, other impacts it had on it, that we would use what they've learned from their history to, now we'll go through these, that we would learn how to, learn from their mistakes, if you will. Their operating cost, again, this would be, they're operating about eight months out of the year. It's turned a little bit more to a maintenance project than a 24-hour day, seven days a week, because the water quality, once it's improved, you just don't obviously have to run it as much. And there's the, the mechanism side, it's 50,000 gallons a minute running on the electric pumps. And let's see, some of the successes that went along with it. So again, the goal would be is to have a discussion with some of the stakeholders. There's some people in Brevard that are very interested in this because when you get in the mosquito lagoon at Banana River, they have no fresh water or fresh ocean water in there. Their water quality is probably, if you measure it, was probably much worse than what we have in, in Bethel Creek. So the idea would be is get the science community online. Some say there's pros and cons and you have to come up with a scoring model. Would it make sense to do it? If you get through that whole exercise and you say, "Okay, it seems like it makes sense", then how would we figure out the funding to do a 89-day pilot project if indeed that's the magic number with the permitting agencies? So at that night, we would have a demonstration, some, some different boards of how would we do a pilot project? How would it be installed? No effects on A1A, no effects on use of the park. The company I've spoke with just to get some guidance from is the same city that drained the city of New Orleans after Katrina. They know how to move billions and trillions of gallons of water. And they've actually done two of these projects, one in Savannah and one in Virginia, I believe, Virginia or Virginia Beach area, to improve water quality to estuary areas. So that'd be kind of picking their brain just as a courtesy. They've given me an engineer that I can talk to and ask questions, just to try to, to learn as much as we can. So that would be the plan is for the June 15th evening. If you have any questions, I can do my best to answer them today, but well, the 15th is a date that seems to be that Duane DeFreeze, Dr. DeFreeze from the Lagoon Council is available. That day, he'll be coming back from an extended period away, but he's going to be back for that date. And it would just be a community open house. Here's how it might work, what questions or concerns might the residents have. Then the science community would have to give us some parameters. Is this beneficial, not beneficial? How would you measure success before, during, and after the project to see? And then if it turned out to be a huge success, then how would we look at doing what Destin did and putting in a permanent installation? So that's sort of the goals and plans. Any questions I might answer for you?
I just got the word that the 15th is not a good night for us.
Okay.
So at the Bethel Creek House, I mean, you might find another location.
Sure, we'll work that out with, with Rob. Okay.
Okay.
And then check with Duane's schedule. He's obviously got to cover a lot of city meetings and stuff up and down the coast, so we'll work out something that, that works out good for everybody and then have enough notice ahead of time to, to get the message out. Thank you.
Commissioners, this is a project to benefit the Bethel Creek area and the surrounding areas of Bethel Creek, correct? It's not a, let's fix the entire river idea?
No, it would, it would, what would the reach be of that project? Obviously, if you improve Bethel Creek, it starts moving north and south from there. How far would it benefit and move cleaner water into some of those areas? If you look at some of the Orca maps, a lot of those areas are the really red areas on the map. So from some of the testing that they've done on, on water quality issues, it's not a silver bullet. It's just sort of, is it 10% of the problem, 10% of a solution oriented or some percentage? And then how far would it, would it carry? Obviously, if you had unlimited money and could pump unlimited water, you could hypothetically replace all the lagoon water with this, but that's probably too much. So there's a balance and that's where the science community's got to chime in.
Yeah, Tim, if I remember, the Destin Harbor was in the range of 250 acres, 200 acres, something like that. And so what you'd really be talking about here, if there's a parallel, the operative word, "if",
Right.
Is the area probably from the marina and around to the village market? That general area would be the target.
Right.
You, you wouldn't probably improve the area out in the intercoastal materially. But of course, that area's always been a concern to us. I mean, we're working on the step system hard in that area. I don't know that we have all the numbers, but our belief has been that that is a problematic area in there just because it's, you know, it's captive.
Right. And council member, on the, on the other side, obviously the main relief canal pumps a lot of water into the kind of marina area, the, the bridge area. There was a second presentation that's something as an idea, how can we scrub that water that's coming through the main relief canal excluding 11 inches of rain in one day?
Right.
Obviously, there's no system you would design for that capacity. But, you know, could we scrub 30 million gallons a day that goes to the main relief canal? And there are systems out there that do it and one company did present of how, how they would clean it, what would they do, what percentages of phosphorus nitrogen chlorophyll they would take out, how much oxygen would be added back? So at least we'll be putting back in clean oxygenated water instead of compounding it with the current type of water that we're discharging through the main canal.
You know, Tim, I, I think exploring anything to improve the river is a good idea. And I think, I think the meeting, it won't be on the 15th, but whatever it is, is a good idea. I guess the question I have for you is, you know, you look at some of these numbers, they're clearly out of reach for the city. And I would hope, you know, that, I would hope the county in particular, and to some degree Indian River shores, could be counted on to participate. I guess my question is, is there any support in the county for this?
There, it hasn't been presented to them because we don't know what the cost would be. But I think when we look at this type of project, it benefits the region of the lagoon and we're all, you know, part of that. So it would be, a portion of it would come from everybody. But I think since the biggest portion of the problem comes from DOT, I would go to their budgetary process first to say, "Let's see what we can do to help clean up the problem that you're creating." Now granted, residents use A1A, but it is a state road and they do have money. They just spent almost a million dollars cleaning the US1 outfalls from Oslo Road north up into the South Sebastian area. So they do have money to put into projects to help improve some water quality issues. So first thing would be is, does it work? What's the benefit area? What are the funding partners? And how do we close the gap? You know, participants potentially from FIND, the Lagoon Council, the NEP program, the Water Management District. We would, I'd put everybody and anybody we could get a hold of to look at, how do we close the gap and, and fund the pilot project?
So it would be fair to say that you're champion, champion in this process.
Yes.
And you would be willing to champion it.
Oh, sure.
With the county commission also.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioners, I just wanted to thank you once again for exploring other options for us to, to help the lagoon. Obviously, as this evolves, I'd certainly like to see a cost-benefit analysis that, you know, it's great to, if we expend this funds, what kind of result can we really expect from, you know, cleaning up the lagoon?
How do we measure our work?
You mentioned earlier some of the maps, Orca. Recently saw the ones that were produced, that were funded by the Indian River Foundation. These are from 17th Street Bridge South. And once again, we're continuing to see those areas where we have homes that have grass all the way to the, you know, to the seawalls, to the lagoon. You know, see, it's grass cuttings and fertilizer. I can't help but feel that still it's getting, you know, community education, best practices, fertilizer, you know, that can make some of the biggest differences that we have.
Sure. And training the lawn maintenance community and some of the licensing they have on the, the fertilizer application and those things. And we have Alexis does a lot of the community HOA meetings and she's available to go out and, and try to educate. And I think they even do both the classes on the training, both in Spanish and English since a lot of the maintenance community is of, of Spanish speaking. So we want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to learn, you know, don't have the outfall of the mower, putting all the clippings, shooting it straight into the lagoon. And you, you think that you would just common sense know that, but some people just go, "I go to that end, I turn around and come back." They don't think of which way stuff flies around.
Now, when you look at the maps, I mean, it shows clearly that using best practice, how effective that is. The area around Vero Beach Country Club, they worked with the Moorings Club, the waterways around the Moorings Club are much clearer.
Right.
You know, once again, it's kind of our public areas in there that we're not getting, you know, the message through to them.
Right. Well, good. Well, we'll work with, with the staff and the, and the Lagoon Council on the dates they have and also the, some of the FIND representatives, both from Brevard and some of the Brevard commissioners, obviously only one probably could come, but to look at, they want to look at it, why, how it might work for them as well. So thank you very much for your time this morning.
You know, the easiest way to make this happen, and keep in mind, we've, you know, I've seen a number of people that have dealt on, worked on this issue in the last several years. FIT might be a good group to get involved with. The reason being is that they've already got a, a line that's out there in the ocean that, and they're already permitted for bringing in water. And also the A1A drainage lines actually go up to FIT. So really, all they would have to do is turn on their pumps and redirect it to a drain.
That already goes that way.
It already goes that way, right. So I mean, yes. Cost-wise, if you're, if you're going to do this as a pilot project, if you can just get the permitting, the actual mechanics to make it happen could be very easy to do.
Right. And they, FIT and a number of the other learning institutions are now part of the Lagoon Council, some of their outreach and advisory groups. And obviously FIT, one, they're right there and they do have access to water in that region. So they would definitely be included in the conversation.
Okay. But you're looking at 89 days for some type of a pilot project?
Somebody had suggested in my conversations with the other ones, the agencies, when I asked how Destin was permitted, and they said, "If you do anything for 90 days or less, it's basically, it's, it's a shorter process than a longer process." So I said that 89 sounds better to me than 90. And I think if you, if you do something for three months and you can't measure a benefit And I think if you do something for three months and you can't measure a benefit of any type, then you kind of know it's not going to work in the big picture.
Well, I can tell you, if you do this in the wintertime, I mean, you're going to attract a ton of manatees and a ton of fish into that area. They're always working, looking for the warmer water, and it'll, it might end up just turning into a refuge area for manatees and fish in the wintertime.
And the mayor and I can catch a lot more fish than you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gilmore, to discuss the Indian River Lagoon Council will be next.
Yes, good morning, Mayor Kramer and Council.
Morning.
Thanks for this opportunity to give you a briefing on kind of where we're at with the Lagoon Council. The TC Palm kind of stole a little of the thunder on Tuesday. Last Friday, we passed, the Lagoon Council passed the 1617 work plan, and I'll hand out some copies of what I looked at.
I'll pass it down. Thank you.
But if you recall, it was about a year, give or take a little bit, when I was last here, and we were attempting to put together a coalition of cities to request a seat on the Indian River Lagoon Council, and that was successful. It was a long process, but successful in the end. And we joined, I think it was in November of last year, the Lagoon Council. The good news is that we put up $50,000 between us, between your city, our city, Sebastian, and Felsmere. We put the county share in, the $50,000. And I wanted to announce that you all are receiving a $122,000 grant for the Vera Isles permable pavement inlet retrofit. That was a grant request that you guys put in in February. We are receiving, Sebastian's receiving, a septic to sewer grant of $100,000 for Indian River Drive area, where we have about 60 people that are still on septic there. The other thing that wasn't reported in the paper was a $30,000 grant to the Environmental Learning Center for living, for the lagoon homeowners association education program. This is a very innovative program to educate homeowners on specifically what you said, Councilmember Turner, how not to, you know, do your grass cuttings and what to do for the homeowners association, what to look for, and best practices, in other words, so you're not polluting the lagoon. So I was really excited to see that for our $50,000 buy-in, we got a quarter million dollars worth of grants this coming year. So that's a great thing. As you go through the thing, you'll also see on item eight, there's shoreline restoration, Brevard and Indian River County split $50,000 of the license plate revenue. And on the last page, agenda item eight is the proposed budget, which shows 2.2 total million, $2.2 million coming into the Lagoon Council and 1.67 million going out in grants. So it's about a 70/30 split as far as turn dirt projects. This is, one of the things that we are actually still waiting for is 500,000 from South Florida Water Management District. They wanted to make sure that all of their half million dollars that they're putting into the lagoon goes into, we call it turn dirt product. In this case, it would be turn water, I guess, stuff that's actually going to fix the lagoon. Turned water, I don't know. But anyway, just wanted to give you the report. Any questions?
I have none.
I know I do. Unfortunately, I don't have that other, that previous budget in front of me, but I know that they had worked on kind of honing the budget so more monies went towards projects rather than administrative costs.
Right.
And I know Duane was really cognitive of that problem, so I wish I had the other one, but I'm pretty sure he did that, didn't he?
Yeah. Well, part of it was South Florida Water wanting all of their money going into projects, and that was, he had to look at a lot of the projects that they couldn't finance last year and put some of that money in projects for this coming, you know, this coming year's budget. I think there's a half million dollars going into septic to sewer Martin County, and that's part of that. 485,000, I believe, is in the Martin County septic to sewer project. And that had been, that had been on the line for a while, doesn't show it here. But I think we're all anxious to get the lagoon fixed, and it's going to be, it's going to be a long-term process. This is not something that's going to get fixed next week, next month, next year. However, one of the other things we did pass on Friday is that we put three new members on the management board, a member each from the Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities, from the Space Coast League of Cities, and also the Volusia League of Cities. As you know, Mayor Kramer, we did a compact, joining the Space Coast League of Cities with the Treasure Coast League of Cities to help the lagoon. The Volusia County League of Cities, they signed on as well. So when you start adding up municipal bodies, we have 52 municipals that are now signed on to this compact in the League of Cities. So that's really the grassroots. You've got now engagement from the cities to the counties to the different other bodies like the, gosh, the Port Authority has signed on as well up there. So pretty much everybody's on board that we've got to fix the lagoon, and I think it's a great thing.
Yeah, I know Mr. DeFreeze has done, yeah, quite a bit in a very short period of time. Looks like we have gotten a return on our investment, however, I'm still looking at about half a million dollars worth of administrative expenses for this council. Next question would be, as we have this brown tide in the northern part of the lagoon, and we're hearing about Scott's looking for an Indian River lagoon czar, you know, I think part of the problem was still addressing all these issues, which we all want to do, is that we're so fractured in all these different areas, and that hopefully maybe this Lagoon Council will be the vehicle to bring, you know, the 30-something nonprofits involved and all the government agencies together to actually, you know, address the issues the most efficiently possible.
Well, and part of the problem, I think, is that there are so myriad, there's such a myriad amount of pollutants that are going in there. And people look at it from, it's kind of like an elephant, you know? If you're in the south part of the lagoon, it's all about the Lake Okeechobee. And even people as far north as up here say, oh, it's all Lake Okeechobee. No, it's not all Lake Okeechobee. In fact, one of the questions I put to one of the scientists Friday was, how much of that Lake Okeechobee water actually makes its way up here? Well, 9% goes as far as the Fort Pierce inlet, so I would say zero gets up here. And of course, if you talk to somebody from Cocoa Beach, where they don't have septic tanks, where they have nothing but sewers, and they're worried about stormwater releases, stormwater going off, they say, oh, there's no problem with septic. We know there's a problem with septic. Septic is a huge contributor in Indian River County and also in Brevard County and St. Lucie as well. So it just depends on where you're at. If you're in the Banana River, you know, something like Commissioner Zork talked about, getting fresh saltwater in there, that probably very well could be the answer in that area because there's no flushing in that particular area. That's one of the reasons why that brown tide got to a critical mass and then died and just ate up all, and the bacteria ate up all the oxygen, and it just shut things down and killed the fish. So there's a number, and of course fertilizer, and, you know, we're still not stopping the fertilization of the golf courses. Golf courses are exempt.
But once again, if you look at the scientific data on the golf courses, those that are doing these best, are big effective.
If they're managed properly, they will, yeah.
Like I said, around Vera Beach Country Club and now the Moorings, I mean, to me, those are saying, hey, you know, if you manage this well, you will not have the impact on the water quality. It's really clear.
Yeah.
Problem is getting the public to buy into this and to be conscious with their, yeah, with their land services because, yeah, it's one thing to clean it up, but you want to stop the pollutants from getting there to begin with.
Exactly. Yeah. So, I mean, it's going to be a long-term project, but I just wanted to report that, you know, what we did looked like a pretty good deal, and 50,000 turning into a quarter million dollars. I think that's a pretty good deal.
Good return.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks so much.
Great. Greatly appreciate your time. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Keep in mind, we did pull item number five, if there's any item that the council would like to discuss individually.
Before, you know, just like a quick question. On item number two, what is HD Water Works? I'm sure I should know what this is, but it's a $224,000, and there's nothing in the item that tells me what this contract was really for.
Well, they furnish all parts and materials. For example, if we hire a contractor to lay a line down a street, we buy the materials at our cost, therefore, there's no markup from the contractor, and there's no markup, we're guaranteed the price on those pipes. So it's varied pieces of material that we buy from this company. And if we do the lines ourselves, we obviously buy the parts there as well.
Okay, so it's just kind of a wholesale supply. I didn't have any problem with the issue, I just couldn't really understand from what was written, what it was about.
Yeah, wholesale supplier is what it is, and parts and materials.
If there's no further, I'd make a motion.
I just have one question real quick. I mean, we've got the fountain improvements. I mean, the fountain is back up and operational, as has been for a while, or?
Yes, it has, and this is the final payment, which we agree with, and it did come in under budget.
Wonderful.
One other quick question before we pass. On the agreement for use of the facilities at Leisure Square, we've got pool hours from eight to seven for swim practice meets between mid-August and mid-November. I mean, that's a real wide spread of hours. Is that?
I think Rob can do that. This is an annual contractor agreement that we have with.
Rob Slezak, Recreation Director, all it allows for is give them a couple hours if they have a swim meet. They may have a swim meet that runs from four to seven. If they have practices, they'll run on Saturday mornings from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. If they have practices during the day, during the week, two to four. So we want to make sure we had the whole thing covered.
Okay, but they're not, they're not taking over the pool for that.
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's, we just want to see. With that, I have no issue. And move for approval, consent agenda, please. Public comment.
Did you want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now would be the time for public comment, if anybody would like to comment on any of the items under the consent agenda. If not, go ahead and call it. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four to nothing. We will move on to item 4A.
An ordinance of the City of Vera Beach, Florida amending Chapter 62, Article 4, M, Industrial District of Part III Land Development Regulations in the Code of the City of Vera Beach Related to Permissible Floor Area for Accessory Recreational Uses Provided for Codification Providing for Conflict and Severability Providing for an Effective Date requested by the Planning and Development Director.
Oh, thank you. For the record, I'm Tim McGarry, the Director of Planning and Development. The ordinance before you is prepared by the staff, the Director of the City Council, in a response to requests by the U.S. Sailing Foundation of Indian River County. The U.S. Sailing Foundation has grown out of its office space at the wastewater treatment plant and is proposing to install a temporary office trailer on the site. However, the existing regulations prohibit the use of any floor area outside existing buildings. So basically, what this does is eliminate that restriction. It still holds, the total floor area is still 7,500 square feet, but allows the trailer to be approved through the permitting process. So unless you have some questions to me?
Okay. Will this have any effect on any other regulations in the city for?
Well, it is so nearly defined, it's got to be in an industrial district, and the only one that really is, I mean, the other would be the old power, you know, the old power plant, conceivably in the future, but right now, no. And I think I pointed out before, in the long term, we really need to change part of the land use on that property. If we're, with U.S. Sailing, they have a lot of plans for further improvements on that property, and I think there will come a time we need to change that.
Thank you.
And just as a comment, as we move over to the power plant, we may be needing those changes to accommodate both partials.
Is there any public comment on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve it then.
We have to open it up for her here. I don't have anybody else say anything.
Oh, he did already.
Okay.
I'll second it. Okay. Just to make sure, there's no public comment on this item? Okay. Ms. Vock, would you call the roll?
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes. Item 4A-B, which, actually, no.
The agreement is really companion to this ordinance.
Well, we wanted to do the consent agenda item and then sneak it in there.
You should do it after B, I would think.
Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead and delay that, and then we'll go ahead with the second hearing.
An ordinance of the City of Vera Beach, Florida amending various provisions of Part III Land Development Regulations in the Code of the City of Vera Beach Related to Permitted Uses in Certain Non-Residential Zoning Districts Providing for Codification Providing for Conflict and Severability Providing for an Effective Date requested by the Planning and Development Director.
Thank you. Before I go into my presentation, there's an issue that's come up with the cancellation of our meeting on Tuesday, the city council meeting. The Florida statutes require that one of the hearings on these dual hearing types for changes in permitted uses, you have to have after 5:00. Unfortunately, we're trying, the, moving forward to try to close on this, this would put us into June 21st, which would be after the date. So there are provisions in the Florida statutes to allow you to, with the majority vote plus one, meaning there are four of you, so you'd all have to vote for that, to schedule this for June 7th during the daytime. So if you feel inclined to do that, this would take care of that problem. So you're, and so if you want to move forward in that, I'd suggest somebody, a motion, second it, and we can.
I'll make a motion to move this forward to June 7th, if that's appropriate, Mayor.
Is that a Tuesday? Is it?
That would be our regular meeting.
Okay. I'll second that. Okay.
We would like to highly encourage this. The purchaser of the diesel plant is here, so if anybody would like to talk to Michael Rector, but I think it's important that we get this process started so we can get to a closing.
I agree. Okay. Is there any individuals that would like to speak on this before we go ahead and vote? If not, if there's any, if there's no more comment, I'll go ahead and have Tammy call the roll.
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes. Okay.
Take care of that, and then we'll move on. The draft ordinance before you is intended to establish a regulatory framework for microbreweries in the City of Vera Beach. The draft ordinance has been unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Board. The ordinance itself was based on a review of similar ordinances that have been prepared for other cities, addressing small-scale alcoholic beverage production, and publication by the American Planning Association entitled "Practice Microbreweries," very apropos for this. In the staff's investigation review of the city code, it was determined that the existing code addresses what they call brew pubs, which are generally more, 50% or more retail, so, which would be a restaurant use under our code. So there's really no need to do that. A lot of ordinances do define that, but we're trying to make this as simple as possible. And usually there, these brew pubs are usually under 5,000 barrels per year, so they're very small. Orca Isle Brewery is a good example of a brew pub. I just want to briefly go, and anything over 15,000 barrels per year is generally going to be an industrial use, that's a brewery. And we have like the Walking Tree, I don't think it's that high, but it certainly is, it's an industrial use district. So there's no need to go into definitions of that. We feel that's covered by the code. So the only area where we're talking about would be microbreweries, which has a combination of both commercial uses as well as some industrial, which doesn't fit as well into the code as written now, so we tried to clarify that. In Section 2 of the ordinance, it amends Chapter 60 definition, so it does a definition of microbrewery, and it's generally something producing no more than 15,000 barrels per year. And this is an industry standard, and also it's a licensing standard in the state of Florida. It's a pretty well-accepted threshold. And the definition itself limits the amount of floor area to the brewery function at not more than 75%. Outdoor storage is not allowed, including portable units, cargo containers, and tractor trailers. So this is generally universal throughout a lot of, most of the ordinances on that So this is generally universal throughout a lot of, most of the ordinances on that, for these kind of microbreweries. We looked at the various districts that would be apropos for this and we thought they have to be more, the more intense kind of commercial areas outside the industrial. So we looked at C1, C1B, the downtown district, and the ALIMC, which is at the airport. So we felt these would be districts that would, would be apropos for this kind of thing. Clearly, microbrewery, brew pubs and those kind of things, the small things could be in, like C1A, which we have now and those other areas. And you could have them in C1 because it covers all that. Section 6 of the ordinance amends Section 6410, which we have, review standards and conditions for outside equipment. And basically, what we've done there is that we would allow certain ancillary equipment that, that's for the brewing function to be approved, subject to either the planning director, if it's under a minor site plan, or a major site plan where the Planning and Zoning Board chairing it, would approve it. Generally, what we're talking about, screening and things that'd be done. The one thing we didn't do in here, we could have spent a lot of time going through a lot of specifications on these, we didn't do that. We felt that each case should be handled as they come in and we felt that was, there was enough safeguards in there to handle that kind of thing. I want to point out, this is not necessarily germane to this, there's one other thing that's come up and I'll bring it up. In further talks with Mr. Rector, who's purchasing the, the old diesel plant, he would like us to add chillers and boilers to that list and I don't have any problem with that, that we could include that amended language in that section. Again, it would, most of those are going to be screened and I think he's already talking about it. And I just want to point out things, it's not necessarily germane to this, Mr. Rector, he's going to have to go through a Historic Preservation Commission, so there are a lot of type of standards that they're going to, and conditions placed on them that'd be above what we'd normally do in a regular type of site plan approval. So that concludes my presentation, unless you have some questions to me of this.
So the amendment that is requested is for chillers and boilers, you said?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure I had it right. Thank you.
Now, are they indoor structures or outdoor structures?
Those are going to be outdoor. They'll be added to that list that I talked about, that we just, that pointed out. And when you get the ordinance for the June 7th meeting, we will have that change in there for you.
Okay, okay, I just, I have a vision of chillers and boilers from my, what I do for a living and sometimes they get rather than.
Well, I went through a whole education with Mr. Rector, he was in my office, we were going through that.
Those aren't like items that you're going to be seeing from the road, they'll probably be in the back someplace. If you would, I'd appreciate it.
And I just want to point out, a lot of those would be screened, so there's certain aspects of it, like the silo that you may see because it's, it goes, it's an icon that goes with these kind of things. There you go.
Good morning.
My name is.
Morning.
Michael Rector, I think I said the address, 816 Iris Lane. That is correct. So as I learned about this process, I've become a student of breweries lately.
I'll bet.
And with Tim working on the amendment and the language that went in there, we had, I had already, we had talked about the silos and those are, again, those are kind of ubiquitous with breweries. And they have a sort of look to them, same thing with the, the various fermentation tanks that we may, that in the future we may add. Initially, we probably are not going to have those, those elements to it. For instance, a chiller or a boiler are inherent to a brewery, you have to essentially have both of them. They're naturally normally on the outside, they can be put on the roof, but what we had done, and I screwed up, my staff didn't produce enough copies, I'm going to show you something if I may. I only have four of those, so you'll have to forgive me if I. I'm going to give you two.
Should we put it on the projector?
That might be the best way to do it.
Yeah. This is all hypothetical because we're not looking at a site plan, okay? So remember that.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Gary.
Yeah, we get into a quasi-dedicial area.
Oh, I just wanted to show.
Yeah, just show what they say.
It was more for informational, you know, this is, obviously hasn't gotten approved by anybody at this point. This is just for us planning and as we were going through the planning process, we realized that, oh, we forgot to sort of talk about this.
Michael, if you don't mind, make sure that Tammy gets a copy of that.
Of course, I have certainly a copy to leave and what have you. There's two different ones. I think I'm going to start if I may with the, with the site plan.
You're fine, I just have to change it from over here.
Yeah, I'm seeing it on our screen.
I'll get it up there.
Sit up there in a moment. If you can get your bearings, I don't know how to do this exactly, if you can get your bearings, this is where we're going to focus our attention on the, on the western portion, the southwestern portion. As you can see, what we have, like a generator, which a generator, of course, would go on the outside of a home or outside of a business, the western side of the, of the building would be screened in, or sorry, landscaped around this, this larger area here. Let me try to do this one. This whole area would be, would be landscaped around and then again, Tim and I talked about screening in the chiller and boiler area as well on this side, or generator if we have to add that at some point. That's really what we're, what I'm looking to revise the language that's currently being proposed, just with that one edit. And just for your information, if I may, when you start to look, this is a proposed floor plan for how the, the first floor, we're going to be adding a mezzanine, which I'll show you in a moment. The first floor, essentially, if I may again, this is the brewery portion in this area, this rectangle, if you will, if you follow that, the working area of the brewery and then the other side is essentially the working area for the kitchen, which is going to serve on sale the food. The part that people, the public will actually be able to, they'll be able to, you know, this area, come over here in this area here, there will be a glass wall, so on the first floor, people can kind of look into what's going on within the brewery. So if you look at it, there's really not a lot of room actually when you take a 9,000 square foot building and start putting in the various elements that you have to have to make a functional, you know, facility, you're limited.
The second floor.
One question for you, Mr. Rector. It's just informational, it's neither here nor there. If you go back to the schematic that you had or floor plan, is the engine still going to be there or not? I'm just curious. And where is it going to be? Just curious.
But if you notice what we've done, currently, the engine is here.
Yeah, okay, right.
We're going to, it would block everything. In terms of where it positions for the, the future of it, it can't be where it is, it'll just, it's a mess in terms of where it is. So we're going to have to relocate it. If you see what we've done, is we're going to take it and we're going to turn it this way.
Okay.
And restore it, of course, at the same time. So it'll be, it'll be there, it'll just be, we may, I think we're leaning toward taking, there's, for lack of, I don't know the terminology, the wheel, there's a.
Flywheel.
The flywheel. I thought we would actually, I mean, the current thought is to take the flywheel off of it because it just, it adds so much extra room. Take it off, so we'll have the engine, not the flywheel, and perhaps get the flywheel put into some, frankly, Ross Power had a great suggestion on something, to take that, that piece and create some sort of artistic sculpture that may be on the outside of the building. And so it, it will try to be incorporated into what we're doing, but I haven't figured that out yet.
Okay, thank you.
But back to the second floor, just for a moment, just, I mean, just because we're talking about it and for no other reason. If you see here, there's a mezzanine being proposed, you would basically be able to walk up these stairs to the mezzanine area or take an elevator or a glass elevator up to the second floor. And so people that were dining in this area here would be looking down upon the action and activity that's in the first floor, near the bar and various things. And people sitting on this side or looking at this side will be able to look down and see the, the activity of the brewery itself, you know, what's going on from a, from a second floor vantage point. So I think we have a great floor plan, obviously, we're still working through with consultants and architects and all that, but as we're going through it, as you can see, there's no room, very limited room to put the various things that are inherent to a brewery, like a chiller, like a boiler, like a generator, you can't put them in the building. So I just wanted the code, if possible, since we're going through it today, to give us the ability, again, subject to all the things that we're going to have to go through, planning and zoning, historic boards and all these things, they will have, you know, oversight of it as well, but it should be, in my opinion, and Tim's as well, in the language now, to give them the ability to approve or what have you. That's really it.
Mm-hmm.
And just, since I have it, I want to just point out, I don't know, you can't really see it very well, just point out that the windows that are currently on the western side are these very long windows here, here and here. But as you get to the, to the southern side, the windows are much higher. And again, we would be using that area because what happened was years ago, there used to be accessory structures actually that were attached to the building. You can see that's.
There was another outside.
I remember.
We're really actually, in some ways, utilizing the building, sort of similar to how it was historically. It's actually goes together with what, and we thought that that was part of what we, what we were trying to achieve. So, any questions?
No.
Thank you.
It's great.
We'll all get educated on microbreweries, thank you.
I was, I was saying, I went to a craft beer show in Philadelphia with, you know, 15,000 people that are in the brewing business, I mean, suppliers and brewers and, of course, it's a new language for me and it's all Chinese at this point, you know, I'm getting better. But it was interesting, it was a lesson. And so a lot of the things that I'm telling you about, I really didn't know what a chiller was until about a month or two ago, you know, so all these are new, new items for me, but they are important to, to doing this successfully. You really can't do without it. So that's why it's important that we figure this out today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate your, your presentation. It just kind of proves, I think, we made the right choice on this. It's very professional looking.
We really have, oh, I'm thrilled about that. And we're really working hard at it, but we're excited about what's going to happen here and it's, I think if we can get, thank you for, by the way, the vote to get it done on June 7th. It's two weeks and it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been the end of the world, but it just, it moves it forward, you know? And so the sooner we move that process forward, then we just continue to move forward on everything, including the environmental and all the other things that are associated with the property and the construction and all of that.
Well, we'll be greatly looking forward to this in anticipation and.
I look forward to it myself.
Wish, wish you all the luck in the world in making this happen.
Great, thank you.
If you have any questions, let me know.
Mr. Mayor, just to give a comment, Michael has really endured this, you know, we're sort of accustomed to things never coming to a conclusion around here. He is not like that, but he has been very patient in the processes and we're getting closer to the end of this and hopefully the signatures that are required for closing will happen in at least the next month.
We've been moving without the ball, frankly, for a while now, as you know, you know, even though the closing hasn't happened, we knew that it was, you know, imminent. So it's, again, it wouldn't have made that much of a difference, but it's certainly nice to check things off and just have, you know, that behind us as opposed to still waiting for it, so.
We appreciate your patience on it, we're trying, we really are.
And he's gone in with his eyes wide open, he's had contact, contact with our consultant, the environmental services that we're doing there. He's hired his own consultant that are reviewing our documents and feels very comfortable with that and Michael told me he'll be going up to Brevard County here soon and talking to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which, so we're getting everything out on the table and making it happen that way.
And that's correct. I mean, that is one thing, actually, that, that, that transfer of ownership actually does allow me to sit down with the, I guess it's the FDEP or whatever it is, the Oversight Committee, and start to work toward the solutions that we need for the environmental aspects and that's just something that we can't do prior. I mean, we're ready for it, we're preparing for it, but you can't actually sit down with someone across the table without having control over property.
Right. Being this is a public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak on this matter before we get too far? If not, I would entertain a motion from the council, including the recommended changes.
Great, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended changes.
I thought we need to make the motions to be for the second hearing. The way are to be held on June 7th.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think that's, I'll make a motion that it be heard on June 7th with the amendments. Is that correct?
Great.
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Vock, would you call the roll?
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.